Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Potemshmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Police Detective.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Awesome.
Thank you. Motion to amend the agenda. A motion to amend the agenda to add item eight, new business H and I, allowing action by council on these additional items. Is there a motion?
Second, Mr. President.
Second, you have a motion, second. Any discussion under that?
Yes, we actually now ended up with two women, woman and girl, eight, I believe, as a result. So which is going on first?
No, there's one eighth of there's H and I is what we're adding.
Add the H and I.
Okay. All right, I'm good, thanks.
Anything else? Mary Dunham, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Potemshmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Set us this comments on gender related items. This is not an opportunity for us to comment on gender related items. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have a comment, you can step to the podium and please state, write your name and address on a piece of paper that's up there. State your name and address. Anyone like to make a comment on the gender related items? See, none will move on to the next agenda. What?
May I make a comment?
Yes, please step off the podium, write your name and address and state your name and address to the board for the record.
My name is Dr. Robert Teich. I've been a practitioner in Manistee for 55 years. My experience with government has been chairman of the planning commission, the big project, the development project on the north side, I was the chairman of that. And the news drive was my project also. I'm not much of a speaker, so forgive my shakiness here. I know Mr. Elliott. And a couple of things have come up. He was proposed as a candidate by the Michigan Municipal League. And there was an alteration in the sequence of events by allegations made by an attorney that was on a retainer for the city of here. Adrian had a rate of $8,000 a month. The city was dissatisfied with the performance of this individual. They gave her a rating of two. They called her into the city council meeting, and at that point she tendered her resignation. And subsequent to that, there was another meeting and they accepted her resignation. Mr. Elliott was not involved in any of these things. Subsequent to that, she made allegations against Mr. Elliott. And it disrupted the sequence of events that would have led to an ordinary accepting of a contract with Mr. Elliott. I think that Mr. Elliott is probably one of the highest qualified people in the state of Michigan for doing this job. You have heard his credentials. And why at this point, the city is negotiating with him in bad faith is beyond belief. He was not allowed to attend this meeting. He has not been allowed to come to Manistee to negotiate his contract with the city manager. And by the way, why is he negotiating a contract with the city manager? I have some other comments. And they're political hearsay. I have heard that several of the council members have another candidate in mind that is a retired military person. This military person is of high rank. And he attended the officers' staff training school. I was a military officer, I know all of this. The primary training for this sort of individual is in logistics and killing people. I think we should think twice about that sort of person being brought into our government. Forgive my ability to speak, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're doing well, thank you. Is there anybody else? Mary Dunham, move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with a asterisk on the consent agenda are considered by the city manager through routine measures. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the remainder portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification of next, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Shemansky, I'll make no motion.
Is there support?
I don't support, but...
Any discussion? Mary Dunham, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Set us this comments on gender related items. This is not an opportunity for us to comment on gender related items. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you have a comment, you can step to the podium and please state, write your name and address on a piece of paper that's up there. State your name and address. Anybody like to make a comment on the gender related items? See, none will move on to the next agenda. What?
May I make a comment?
Yes, please step off the podium, write your name and address and state your name and address to the board for the record.
My name is Dr. Robert Teich. I've been a practitioner in Manistee for 55 years. My experience with government has been chairman of the planning commission, the big project, the development project on the north side, I was the chairman of that. And the news drive was my project also. I'm not much of a speaker, so forgive my shakiness here. I know Mr. Elliott. And a couple of things have come up. He was proposed as a candidate by the Michigan Municipal League. And there was an alteration in the sequence of events by allegations made by an attorney that was on a retainer for the city of here. Adrian had a rate of $8,000 a month. The city was dissatisfied with the performance of this individual. They gave her a rating of two. They called her into the city council meeting, and at that point she tendered her resignation. And subsequent to that, there was another meeting and they accepted her resignation. Mr. Elliott was not involved in any of these things. Subsequent to that, she made allegations against Mr. Elliott. And it disrupted the sequence of events that would have led to an ordinary accepting of a contract with Mr. Elliott. I think that Mr. Elliott is probably one of the highest qualified people in the state of Michigan for doing this job. You have heard his credentials. And why at this point, the city is negotiating with him in bad faith is beyond belief. He was not allowed to attend this meeting. He has not been allowed to come to Manistee to negotiate his contract with the city manager. And by the way, why is he negotiating a contract with the city manager? I have some other comments. And they're political hearsay. I have heard that several of the council members have another candidate in mind that is a retired military person. This military person is of high rank. And he attended the officers' staff training school. I was a military officer, I know all of this. The primary training for this sort of individual is in logistics and killing people. I think we should think twice about that sort of person being brought into our government. Forgive my ability to speak, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're doing well, thank you. Is there anybody else? Mary Dunham, move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with a asterisk on the consent agenda are considered by the city manager through routine measures. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the remainder portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification of next, notification regarding next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Shemansky, I'll make no motion.
Is there support?
I don't support, but...
Any discussion? Mary Dunham, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Mayor Potemshmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business. Introduction of a new employee. Firefighter permanent.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, I'm honored to introduce your newest member, Matt Witkowski. Matt comes to us mobile of the area. He's got extensive background in medical care medicine. And I think he's going to be a great asset to our department. I'll let Matt do any other introductions and give a little bit of history about himself.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Matt Witkowski. I grew up at Manistee. I graduated from NHS in the year 2000. From there, I went to the UP. I spent four years at Northern, working on a degree in secondary education with a earth science minor and a social studies major, trying to teach as much as possible. After that, I realized that education wasn't quite where I was headed. I had done some wildfire work out west and realized that maybe the structural side of things would have been a little bit more in my alley. And I took up that Lake Superior State University. From there, I began training in EMS, not knowing anything about it other than driving the ambulance. And I found that I took to it like a fish to water. I truly enjoy that aspect of things, providing service and aid to those who need it most when they need it most. And just being that comfort that a lot of people need at a time of crisis. I spent roughly 14 years primarily in EMS. I did some volunteer service with Fire with Fire. I also worked part-time with City Fire for a short duration. I would have liked to have stayed longer, however, at the time I was working three jobs and that was a bit too much to take out of the family as well. My wife also works currently for MMR as a paramedic, so it kind of runs in her family. I'm looking forward to staying here. I enjoy the community. As I said, I've grown up here, so I have a lot of ties to the area. And I've always enjoyed being by the lake. I've gone out west and nothing is quite the same as having Lake Michigan at your back door. The sunsets are beautiful, the ocean is beautiful and gorgeous. I love the massive trees out west, but nothing comes close to being in Manistee.
Any questions?
Matt.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Matt, we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Remember where I lived in case you get a little over.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Introduction to the Connecting Manistee County Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you all hear me all right with the man's line? Sounds good. My name is Rose Vaske, and I'm here speaking, representing Connecting Manistee County. Connecting Manistee County is a grassroots effort that's come together to look at possible solutions for broadband, internet connectivity in Manistee County. Our goal is to hopefully find some solutions and answers so that we can have high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet for all our residents. Within your packet, you'll see one of the first things is a list of the committee members that have joined us in looking at this endeavor. One of the first steps that has been taken is a survey that's been conducted throughout the county. That was funded by the Manistee ISB and West Shore Community College. So also in your packet, you'll see some high chart data that we've gotten back so far from residents. You can see where those surveys are coming from. And we're hopeful that the group that's doing this study will eventually have this all mapped out for us. One of the most interesting things, you'll see what providers they have, what ambulance fee they have, what services the people are reporting, that currently cost them. Are you satisfied with your service? And on the first page of that high chart too, you'll see if you currently have internet access at home. And we have 26 people, or 26% of the respondents indicating no. And that's for various reasons, some it's cost, and some it's just not available. So from the information we're getting back from the survey, we think I confirm that yes, there is a problem in the county for many folks, especially out in the outlying areas. There is also that we're willing to share an 11-page of comments that survey respondents have made, just let us know we can forward that too. And one comment that's been made more than once is, does you really need a survey? You know that there's an issue with connectivity in our rural areas. The committee sees a unique opportunity at this time to look at the funding that's becoming available to our townships, our city, our county to maybe really take a deep dive, look into what can and can't be done. We don't have all the answers to that by any means. And the next step we see is to have a feasibility study done. So we're here today just asking for your support and consideration that if there's enough of the other townships, villages, the county, and other stakeholders in our areas, such as the hospital and central wellness and the school district are interested in moving forward, we would ask that you would consider a small monetary support to have that feasibility study connected. Is there any questions?
I want to thank you and your husband for working so diligently on this. I was invited to join your committee and I was happy to do so, and just amazed at the information we're gathering. As a former real estate agent, I can tell you that that is something, that is a problem in the rural parts of our county. I think it's also important to the economic development that people all over the county have high-speed internet. So I think it would be important, in my opinion, that the city does contribute some money for the feasibility study. I don't know what that number's going to be yet, but I think it's vital that we're more connected than what we are right now. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight, boss.
And thank you for being part of that committee. And that's our whole intent, is to make sure that we have accurate information and have ourselves and the county as well armed as possible with the knowledge to make the best decisions, to maximize those resources that are coming our way and do the most for the most in our county.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Again, I would also like to add my thanks. And again, I think if the pandemic proved anything, it's how necessary of having quality, high-speed, affordable internet is. I know our students had challenges dealing with the slow speeds, especially during the day when so many people were coming on. You may have internet connection, but not good enough to be able to actually do the work you needed to do. And again, I know that you and your committees, if it wasn't for Zoom, wouldn't have been able to get any business accomplished at all. And how many people on the committee weren't able to connect or would lose their connection? So it's pretty obvious that Manistee is in need of a hard look at our internet capabilities and hopefully coming up with a solution to be able to fix it. So thank you for the work.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that. And it's not that the problem wasn't here before COVID, but you're exactly right, COVID is supersigned to laser light. All that impact, and especially out in our more remote and rural areas, we're talking about so many solutions to getting what's needed services to people through telemedicine and telemedicine help. And that can't happen if you don't have access.
Well, I want to thank you for bringing this issue forward and all your hard work that you're doing. Wish you a lot of success. If there's anything council can do, I'm sure they'll be willing to help. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Consideration of ordinance 21-15 food vendors. City staff developing ordinance to allow and regulate food vendors outside the central business district. As an ordinance, two separate ratings are required. This ordinance was introduced at the June 1st, 2021 meeting and could be adopted at this time. At this time, council could take action to approve ordinance 21-15 food vendors. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion?
Just a little bit from me. The same, I talked to somebody that was one of the directors on St. Louis Saints, and they had a director's meeting, I don't know, maybe about a week ago or so. Anyway, we did have a forum, but they were aware of the food trucks, and they don't know which way to go. So if they decide that a food truck might actually help, can we change the ordinance? Can we amend this somehow or get in touch with the food vendors to allow them to come to the base blocking?
Certainly. If council chooses that some future date can amend the ordinance.
Okay. Because they may. I don't know, if they don't have a forum, I couldn't really make a decision.
Anything else?
I think staff did a really good job with the rewrite. And I think we addressed all of the concerns that I have with it. And I think it'll be good for Manistee. I think it'll be another way of kind of generate some excitement with people. I'm looking forward to it, especially in the evening time when you have groups of vending trucks finding locations.
Anybody else? Mary Dunham, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Potemshmansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of setting a fee for food vendor permits. Permits are issued on an annual basis and are effective from January 1st through December 31st. If adopted earlier in this meeting, the food vendor ordinance will be in effect this year and approximately, for approximately six months. Staff recommends a permit fee of $250 from July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. Thereafter, fees would be $500 annually. At this time, council could take action to establish a fee for food vendor permits in the amount of $250 from July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. And commencing January 2nd, 2022, the permit fee would be 500 annually. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support?
Second.
A motion to support, any discussion, or comments?
I just have a question. Is that a standard fee for the food vendors?
I don't know that there's a standard form. We feel it's reasonable. There's other communities that charge much more.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Mrs. Taylor, does the $500, does that include electric cookups where available? They're responsible for their own electricity.
Any other questions, concerns? Mary Dunham, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Potemshmansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Conia.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business. Introduction of a new employee. Firefighter permanent.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, I'm honored to introduce your newest member, Matt Witkowski. Matt comes to us mobile of the area. He's got extensive background in medical care medicine. And I think he's going to be a great asset to our department. I'll let Matt do any other introductions and give a little bit of history about himself.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Matt Witkowski. I grew up at Manistee. I graduated from NHS in the year 2000. From there, I went to the UP. I spent four years at Northern, working on a degree in secondary education with a earth science minor and a social studies major, trying to teach as much as possible. After that, I realized that education wasn't quite where I was headed. I had done some wildfire work out west and realized that maybe the structural side of things would have been a little bit more in my alley. And I took up that Lake Superior State University. From there, I began training in EMS, not knowing anything about it other than driving the ambulance. And I found that I took to it like a fish to water. I truly enjoy that aspect of things, providing service and aid to those who need it most when they need it most. And just being that comfort that a lot of people need at a time of crisis. I spent roughly 14 years primarily in EMS. I did some volunteer service with Fire with Fire. I also worked part-time with City Fire for a short duration. I would have liked to have stayed longer, however, at the time I was working three jobs and that was a bit too much to take out of the family as well. My wife also works currently for MMR as a paramedic, so it kind of runs in her family. I'm looking forward to staying here. I enjoy the community. As I said, I've grown up here, so I have a lot of ties to the area. And I've always enjoyed being by the lake. I've gone out west and nothing is quite the same as having Lake Michigan at your back door. The sunsets are beautiful, the ocean is beautiful and gorgeous. I love the massive trees out west, but nothing comes close to being in Manistee.
Any questions?
Matt.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Matt, we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Remember where I lived in case you get a little over.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Introduction to the Connecting Manistee County Committee.
Welcome. Thank you. Can you all hear me all right with the man's line? Sounds good. My name is Rose Vaske, and I'm here speaking, representing Connecting Manistee County. Connecting Manistee County is a grassroots effort that's come together to look at possible solutions for broadband, internet connectivity in Manistee County. Our goal is to hopefully find some solutions and answers so that we can have high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet for all our residents. Within your packet, you'll see one of the first things is a list of the committee members that have joined us in looking at this endeavor. One of the first steps that has been taken is a survey that's been conducted throughout the county. That was funded by the Manistee ISB and West Shore Community College. So also in your packet, you'll see some high chart data that we've gotten back so far from residents. You can see where those surveys are coming from. And we're hopeful that the group that's doing this study will eventually have this all mapped out for us. One of the most interesting things, you'll see what providers they have, what ambulance fee they have, what services the people are reporting, that currently cost them. Are you satisfied with your service? And on the first page of that high chart too, you'll see if you currently have internet access at home. And we have 26 people, or 26% of the respondents indicating no. And that's for various reasons, some it's cost, and some it's just not available. So from the information we're getting back from the survey, we think I confirm that yes, there is a problem in the county for many folks, especially out in the outlying areas. There is also that we're willing to share an 11-page of comments that survey respondents have made, just let us know we can forward that too. And one comment that's been made more than once is, does you really need a survey? You know that there's an issue with connectivity in our rural areas. The committee sees a unique opportunity at this time to look at the funding that's becoming available to our townships, our city, our county to maybe really take a deep dive, look into what can and can't be done. We don't have all the answers to that by any means. And the next step we see is to have a feasibility study done. So we're here today just asking for your support and consideration that if there's enough of the other townships, villages, the county, and other stakeholders in our areas, such as the hospital and central wellness and the school district are interested in moving forward, we would ask that you would consider a small monetary support to have that feasibility study connected. Is there any questions?
I want to thank you and your husband for working so diligently on this. I was invited to join your committee and I was happy to do so, and just amazed at the information we're gathering. As a former real estate agent, I can tell you that that is something, that is a problem in the rural parts of our county. I think it's also important to the economic development that people all over the county have high-speed internet. So I think it would be important, in my opinion, that the city does contribute some money for the feasibility study. I don't know what that number's going to be yet, but I think it's vital that we're more connected than what we are right now. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight, boss.
And thank you for being part of that committee. And that's our whole intent, is to make sure that we have accurate information and have ourselves and the county as well armed as possible with the knowledge to make the best decisions, to maximize those resources that are coming our way and do the most for the most in our county.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Again, I would also like to add my thanks. And again, I think if the pandemic proved anything, it's how necessary of having quality, high-speed, affordable internet is. I know our students had challenges dealing with the slow speeds, especially during the day when so many people were coming on. You may have internet connection, but not good enough to be able to actually do the work you needed to do. And again, I know that you and your committees, if it wasn't for Zoom, wouldn't have been able to get any business accomplished at all. And how many people on the committee weren't able to connect or would lose their connection? So it's pretty obvious that Manistee is in need of a hard look at our internet capabilities and hopefully coming up with a solution to be able to fix it. So thank you for the work.
Thank you. And I do appreciate that. And it's not that the problem wasn't here before COVID, but you're exactly right, COVID is supersigned to laser light. All that impact, and especially out in our more remote and rural areas, we're talking[605.39]
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of setting a fee for food vendor permits, permits are issued on an annual basis and are effective from January first through December the thirty first. If adopted earlier in this meeting, the food vendor ordinance will will be in effect this year and approximately for approximately six months. Staff recommends a permit fee of two fifty from Janu- or July first twenty twenty one through December thirty first twenty twenty one. Thereafter, fees would be five hundred dollars annually. At this time, council could take action to establish a fee for food vendor permits in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars from January, from July first twenty twenty one through December thirty first twenty twenty one and commencing January second twenty twenty two, the permit fee would be five hundred annually. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support?
Second.
A motion of support, any discussion, or comments?
I just have a question, is that a standard fee? Or the fee that we're?
I don't know that there's a standard form. We feel it's reasonable. There's other communities that charge much more.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Mrs. Taylor, does the five hundred dollars, does that include electric cookups where available? They're responsible for their own electricity. Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Harry, numbers take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of employment of a CFO at Bradford as interim city manager. The city charter allows city council to designate an individual to perform the duties of city manager during a vacancy. The city manager retired on July second twenty twenty one and the new city manager will not begin employment by that date. At this time, council could take action to designate CFO at Bradford as interim city manager beginning at five P M. on July second twenty twenty one. And until such time, as a new city manager begins her appointment with the city. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is seconded, any discussion? Signum, you say the rule.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into an installment purchase contract with Shelby State Bank and Hallfire Incorporated to finance a previously approved purchase for an ambulance and related equipment. On October sixth twenty twenty, council approved the purchase of an ambulance and related equipment in the amount of two hundred sixty one thousand, two hundred sixty eight dollars. When approved, it was anticipated that financing arrangements would have to be made at a later date due to a long lead time. The city solicited financial bids for the ambulance and related equipment and needed to close on the financing to pay the vendor. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to enter into an installment purchase contract with Shelby State Bank and Hallfire Incorporated in the amount of two hundred twenty five thousand dollars to finance the purchase of an ambulance and related equipment and further authorize this the chief financial director to execute any needed documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mark.
The president, second. Motion of support, any discussion?
Chief, do we have a delivery date on the new ambulance?
Currently, the proposed date is to be looking around July fifteenth. We're anticipating having any service close to the first of August. We'll have some radio work to install and review the graphics that are being done, third parties.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Harry, numbers take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here, yes.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of budget amendments twenty twenty one dash three for fiscal year and June thirtieth twenty twenty one. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated non-budget events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendment addresses expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. Mr. Bradford, you want to just, for the record, give us a summary?
Certainly, Mayor. Um, the first item that we are proposing for a budget amendment is a city council, um, professional services line item, which would cover the additional seven thousand dollars for the city manager search to the M L. The first ten thousand was reallocated from the deer call that was canceled. Um, the next item has to do with transfers out for the general fund. Um, the first one relates to the sale of a lot and that was the net proceeds that was going to be transferred to the local street funds for previous council decisions. And then there's also a contractual service of four thousand dollars, um, for the rental inspections. We're splitting those out now and paying for the rental inspection out of the general fund. And we need to make sure that's reflected in our expenditure budgets, but we do get revenue to offset that. Um, and the local streets, that's the next item. Um, we refinanced, uh, some debt back in early twenty, or early part of this fiscal year. We had to do a comprehensive accounting entry to account for that. So this budget amendment of seven hundred thousand dollars, um, is necessary to properly reflect the accounting, but that's offset by new debt that was refinanced at a lower rate. Um, the next amendment is in the oil and gas fund where we have to amend the budget to pay a little bit higher amount for the professional services to manage the fund. And that's due to the excellent performance in the stock market that we've had, um, over the past year, actually. So that was a nine thousand dollar increase. And that fee is based on the value of the portfolio. So as the portfolio rises, the investment advisor's fee goes up. Um, next item is the building inspector. Um, we had underestimated how many building permits and what the value of those building permits were going to be. So we needed to increase the expenditure amount and that's more than offset by the revenue piece that we get back in. So, um, we get twenty, you know, twenty percent off the top on that. Those are the budget amendments, if there's any questions?
Signum, thank you, thank you. At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendments twenty twenty one dash three for fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty one. Is there a motion?
Shemansky, I'll make that motion.
Support?
Support.
Any further discussion of questions? Harry, numbers take the roll.
So, excuse me, Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of directing the city manager to schedule additional interviews of candidates as may be requested by council and or directing further solicitation of potential candidates through the Michigan Municipal League. City council at its May thirteenth twenty twenty one meeting authorized the city manager to initiate discussions with Gregory M. Elliot on an accepted employment agreement, which was presented to council for the consideration prior to execution. Discussion took place at the meeting as to whether council should consider other candidates and or conduct other interviews for the position of city manager. At this time, council could take action to direct the city manager to schedule additional interviews of candidates as may be requested by council and or directed or direct further solicitation for potential candidates through the Michigan Municipal League or otherwise. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Support?
I have motion of support, any discussion?
Is this going to cost us another amount of money for the M L. to do a search?
Not to my knowledge. It's all part of the, um, the fee of, of repaying.
Should, we discussed the process a little bit, it's been awkward. So I'm just wondering, um, I went back and I looked at the minutes from twenty fifteen. Um, and the, we had an interim city manager at that time and it's been by those and, um, George Saylor drafted the, um, the agreement. I'm just wondering if maybe we should think about that process going forward as to how it should be handled. Um, I, I mean, you're not going to be here after July second. Um, and George is going to be here. So I'm thinking it would be probably apropos to, if we could have the city attorney step up and do that. It makes sense to me. Uh, they have at least two people looking at it. Um, the negotiations, we'd probably have to file that at shoulders. So these are things that we should be aware of and think about the process and make sure that there's more than one person looking at the agreement so that we don't have any awkward moments, uh, in language on it like we did.
I would say that, that it's good thinking and maybe premature, but we haven't voted on this yet, but if we do something along these lines, I would suggest that we have a special meeting to figure out our next step and make those details known in the special meeting.
Well, I wanted to get it in there before everybody just passed it, but it just went away, so I just wanted to get it in there.
Anybody else?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say I I wanted this on the agenda only because I'm not comfortable with, uh, the way that things have played out. We, uh, authorized the city manager and staff to negotiate the contract and the emails that went back and forth that didn't include the city manager, I thought they were in poor taste and it sets a bad tone and it kind of says to me that this candidate did not, or might have a problem following council's, um, agendas. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Anybody else?
Well, I, well, I can't, why he couldn't come to town to discuss the contract, why he was totally couldn't come to town?
He was, he was never told that.
And that when we threw the stuff that you discussed, it was, it inspired you?
No, I, I never told him he wasn't welcome to come to town. I never told him he couldn't attend a council meeting. I don't know how, where that's coming from.
Could, could we even bargain for coming to a council meeting?
No, it's an, it's an open meeting.
Okay.
Anybody else? Harry, numbers take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The next is a consideration of putting an appointment agreement between the city of Manistee the city of Manistee and city manager candidate Gregory M. Elliot. Um, do we even want to get into that council? If we're going to be looking at other candidates?
I think we should.
Are you too?
I think it's just rudimentary.
Okay.
I think we need to go through this process. It's, it's been awkward, fall through it and I honestly think that's the right thing to do.
At the May thirteenth twenty twenty one, special meeting council uh, took action to make conditional offer of employment to Gregory M. Elliot and to authorize the city manager, Dan Taylor, to initiate discussions with Mr. Elliot as to the terms of the employment agreement to bring before council for approval prior to execution. At this time, council could take action to approve the employment agreement between city of Manistee and the city manager candidate Gregory M. Elliot and instruct the mayor and clerk to execute the documents once the required pre- pre-employment drug screening comes back with accepted results. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I've got a, a couple areas, um. Overall, uh, the, it looks like the agreement has been, um, fairly, um, well-defined by, uh, Mr. Taylor with Mr. Elliot. Uh, there is a few areas that I have concern with. Uh, the first is the retirement. Uh, we no longer offer a, a D B, reverse defined benefits for, uh, um, non-union, uh, employees. Uh, and it, it was negotiated in twenty eighteen. Uh, it has been built into contracts and to single out a single person uh, in the whole organization and especially when that person is sitting at the top of the pyramid and then sends, uh, you know, the wrong message and and opens us up for, um, issues with further negotiations with the union and that's something that we've had. I think that our defined contribution, uh, is, is fair and reasonable. It amounts to, uh, uh, up to, I believe seventeen percent. Um, that, that could be included. Uh, it's, uh, three percent, uh, matched up to seven percent. Um, so again, I, I think we have a, uh, a defined, uh, contribution plan that is fair and reasonable for retirement purposes. Um, the other area is, uh, on severance pay. Um, basically, uh, the request for Mr. Elliot is to basically double, um, the requirements for severance, uh, from, uh, three months to six months for the first three years and up to, uh, uh, nine months for five years and over. Uh, and currently, we have, uh, that capping at six months. So those two are, are, to me, I, I, I think are, um, have to be, uh, negotiated down to the standard that we've already set. Uh, the third is, uh, obviously something that can be negotiated. That's on salary. Um, Mr. Elliot has asked for the top of the salary range that we had indicated at a hundred and ten. I understand that our policy in the past has always been, uh, a two percent above the highest paid employee, uh, which would be something around a hundred and two thousand dollars, I believe. Uh, although we did set a hundred and ten as our top, so I think that there is some room for negotiation, but not necessarily all the way to the end. So those are the three points that I had, uh, that I believe that, uh, we need to bring closer to life with what we've had in the past, uh, before I would be willing to accept the agreement.
Well, what do you mean by the past? Because it was my understanding, and I hate, I'm sorry, I can mean the R R to anybody, but it was my understanding that this matched the same things that are in Mr. Taylor's contract with the exception of couple of items. One is health insurance and one is the pension.
And, and the severance pay.
I mean.
And the severance pay issue is doubled from what's in.
And is that doubled then?
Doubled, right. It starts off from, uh, in, in, uh, Mr. Taylor's contract. Uh, it's three months and, uh, in this contract, it's starting off at six months, severance pay from the very start. So that's, that's basically, um, where it currently ends is where he is asking an start.
Okay.
And I think that's, again, I think that's, uh, a little bit too, uh, too much for the city to accept.
But the correct answer, did we vote on that? What do we have to vote? And raise it up to the nine hundred?
I don't think so.
No, I think you're talking about, um, extending the amount of time I had. I noticed that I had to give the council, um, if I was going to leave. That was the only amendment.
Is there anybody else? So for me to understand, if I vote yes on this motion, our search is over?
That'd be correct.
If I vote no, we continue the search?
Correct.
Or the motion, correct?
Well, wait a minute, shouldn't we negotiate that with Mr. Elliot? I mean.
Can we do both? Can we? Well, you, you already passed a motion saying that you're going to reopen the process. Right.
Well, there's, in my mind, maybe this is just real estate, but in my mind, I don't see why we can't begin the process and also send back this contract with some suggestions as the wording on it. Because we don't, I think it can be ongoing at the same time. I mean, be like you selling a house. You didn't send in an offer on your house. You don't like it yet. You're going back and forth and another offer comes through. You can take a look at that. But I know time is kind of of the essence because we can't be out without a city manager for a while. I think it's worthy to, to at least try to get love and upstart.
Council, of course, can do whatever it wants. The, the first motion was to reopen the process to look for a city manager and consider other candidates. And I suppose you could do that while you negotiate something. I don't think that's, that's not something that's been presented.
But the way this is ordered, if we, if we, if we support this motion, is he not at that point hired, we're accepting this contract?
That's would be the result of the motion. If you have majority say yes, then you would be accepting the contract as, as presented.
Con- consent doesn't say that we would ask for the interview and then approve the contract somebody. And I think that Mick was very, very well-dated in saying why this contract is unacceptable. Period. I agree completely with your estimate and your, your assessment there. So for me, personally, as a city council member, I can move on from Mr. Elliot, interview other candidates, and I think we reject this contract. That's just my first view.
I would also like to reject this contract and move on.
Anybody else?
Well, a- again, I, I on the issues that I've addressed, I, I would reject this, uh, agreement, but not necessarily Mr. Elliot. Uh, and I guess there is, there is a difference.
There is.
I, I think we, you know, again, if, if, if the issues that I have, uh, stated, um, can be uh, negotiated with, uh, Mr. Taylor, then possibly a new agreement can be put forward to the council. But, uh, again, as, as stated in this document, I am not for, uh, those, those three areas that I have addressed.
Right, and I have to agree with Nick, because I thought these areas were going to be cleared up and all that, or if you vote a favor, maybe others could adapt.
Anything else?
Well, I think we need to be clear that if we reject the contract, that he can, the negotiations can continue and he can come back with another contract.
I, I think, I think that takes a whole other force of our council to continue negotiations. If we reject this contract, the city manager, you directed the negotiation, that's my opinion, I had a different opinion there.
Mr. Saylor?
No, I, I would agree with that. The, the previous motion was to open for further interviews and, um, request additional candidates. Council approved that. To reject this contract, it certainly can ask Mr. Taylor to go back and negotiate, but that's going to require some other action by council. And I don't think he has the authority to do that at this point.
So can I make the motion to move on from Mr. Elliot?
What?
I think we reject the contract. It ends unless the city council says to the city manager, go back and renegotiate with Mr. Elliot. Why would we do that? I don't know, but that's what I think I can, what George said.
Again, I think there's been some discussion about maybe we need to have another meeting to talk about the process. And at that process, you certainly could say, yeah, I still won't consider Mr. Elliot. I want the, the city manager or someone to go back and, uh, respond to these concern, terms that are concerned. Uh, you could do that at that process, but I don't think we have that, you know, before us here today.
Is everybody clear on what we're holding on?
No, I don't think so. I, I really do think, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep interjecting here, but I think we owe Mr. Elliot at least a counter or at least tell him what we disagree with.
That, that, that's over the can of worms, but I think that Mr. Elliot was very clear on what we didn't like and I didn't. It was very clear because he reached out to city council, avoiding the city manager, circumvented him who wanted to negotiate with us directly because he couldn't get a defined benefit program by negotiating with the city manager. We don't have a defined benefit program. I think that was the main sticking point with him. It's a main sticking point with us, that we don't have one. I don't. And my guess is if I'm Mr. Elliot and you reject this contract, you ask this interview more, I'm not talking to anyone, but that's, that's all I can eat, that's what I would say. I think we reject this contract, we move on for a different pick man, candidate. I think that's what is happening tonight.
Is there anybody else? Harry, numbers take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
No.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martin Paniac.
No.
Councilmember Beaton.
I was saying yes because I think he has the qualifications and we think, I think we should all go and counter him.
Mayor Potem Shemansky.
No.
Mayor Zalinski.
No.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion failed.
Thank you.
I believe we're up to notices, communications, and announcements. Tonight, we have a report from Finance Director, Mr. Bradford, on the oil and gas board, Brownfield, Great Island, and Story.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I passed out a packet of information, um, for my presentation. I'll run through it here. It'll cover all three of those areas that we spoke about. Try to keep it brief. Um, first of all, I want to talk a little bit about the Finance and Treasurer's Office. Um, it's a portion of what we call the Administrative Services Department. We have over fifty years of staffing experience with the city. And if you count other government experience, it's probably closer to seventy years of experience amongst our five employees. Um, the department consists of Heather Cuthley, myself, Laura Lorraine, Angie Rab, and Kaylee Owens. And, uh, we're all kind of interchangeable parts in the sense that, um, you know, we do a lot of different things and assist each other. And some of the people are doing clerk functions and some are doing finance functions both. So there's a lot of, uh, back and forth and, um, everybody works very well together. Um, the responsibilities of the Administrative Services Department, um, include answering a whole lot of questions. Sometimes it feels like we're the, the, um, traffic directors for City Hall when people come in. And oftentimes, they're not even at the right facility to be able to send them up to the county or elsewhere to get assistance. But we do a lot of that. Um, we obviously handle all of the city's money coming in. We pay all of the bills. Um, we finance different projects by issuing debt or installment purchase contracts. We do all the financial reporting and accounting. And then we're also responsible for overseeing, uh, the I T contractor and the facility manager, uh, as well as the assessing department. And we do back office work for the Grand Central Station for the areas. Um, just some metrics in the office that I pulled up. Um, we have probably up to a hundred and twenty-five customers per day at the counter on busy days under normal non-COVID circumstances when we're open. Um, obviously, we don't have that foot traffic now, but, um, that's what it's been in the past. We issue seventy-three hundred tax bills a year, about forty-two thousand water bills, um, process about twenty-three hundred accounts payable checks, thank you very much, Heather. Uh, five thousand invoices and pay about fifteen point nine million dollars in bills. And we field lots and lots of phone calls, uh, often for other departments because they don't know where to call necessarily. We do try to go close to the right places. Um, highlights of the last year, obviously, it was a year that was dominated by COVID. Um, but we did, uh, we did manage through that, I think, pretty effectively. We're able to continue to provide, uh, high-quality services to the residents and to visitors. Uh, we did add a second payment drop box out in front of City Hall. So now people have two places that they can conveniently drop off payments and don't necessarily have to come into City Hall. That was a big success. Um, in a very short process, last, uh, late February, largely transitioned people to be able to remote work. And, um, you know, that's in large part, uh, due to the fact that the city has consistently made investments in its I T infrastructure. And I think that showed in the fact that we were, uh, able to pretty quickly pivot and get people up and working remotely. Um, we also implemented remote meetings. We both zoomed for public meetings and Teams for internal meetings and, uh, those have been universally accepted and will still be used moving forward, especially the Teams component. And those have been universally accepted and will still be used moving forward, especially the Teams component of that. We implemented a new phone system last fall, which also helped considerably in people remote working because they're able to install software on their laptops to be able to handle calls seamlessly. So that was a big help. Last year, we put in a new server for our enterprise applications, and that's been working very well. And we issued 8.4 million in capital improvement and refunding bonds of 18 million in USDA rural development lines in the last year. And finally, I just again want to point out the excellent teamwork that we have in the Administrative Services Department. It's due to all the employees who are working really hard. With that, I'm going to transition over to the Oil and Gas Investment Board. The first picture I have in the packet there shows the Aztec plant. And if you flip to the next page, you just happen to notice an article, news advocate, where they have their retrospective where they look back. And 40 years ago today, apparently, there was a fire at the Aztec plant. And I think that's noteworthy because it's pretty astounding to think that those wells have been in production for 40 years now and are still continuing to produce. Obviously, not about the same amount that they used to, but still generating royalties for the citizens of Manistee and being processed through that plant. Oil and Gas Board consists of Mayor Rosker, Zolinski is the chair, myself is the vice chair, councilmember Aaron Potmarten Paniac, Doug Parks, and Jeff Row. And it meets quarterly. And typically, we have the investment advisor either remotely or present at those meetings. The Oil and Gas Fund is a real gift to the future generations and current generations of Manistee. Previous councils wisely protected that through the charter, and it's done very well for the city. The, the one thing that the Oil and Gas Board's primary responsibility is to review the investment policy statement. And they do that every year. That is the policy for managing the funds of the Oil and Gas Fund. It identifies what investments are allowable. It sets guidelines for asset allocation, which is very key in an endowment-type fund, which the Oil and Gas Fund is. Also establishes performance benchmarks. And then finally, determines the annual spending rule. And earlier this year, council did make a change to that spending rule upon the recommendation of the Oil and Gas Board. And that was to drop the spendable allowance from 4% to 3.75% and then down to 3.5% over two years. The reason for doing that was because expected rates of returns, notwithstanding the current stock market run-up, are expected to decline over time from what they have been historically. And this move helps us to preserve the purchasing power, provide for intergenerational equity, and increases the sustainability of that fund. For fifth figure 22, the, the budget that's going to start to arrive first, it'll generate about $115,000 for capital projects in the city. The next few pages are snapshots out of the annual report that Bartlet sends to us every year. Bartlet is the investment advisor. First one is the asset allocation. And you can see we're about 31% in fixed income, about 65% in equities, and the remainder in cash. And that's very much in line with what the asset allocation is. Pretty consistent. Next section shows where our equities, which is the bulk of the portfolio, was invested in. And, you know, we have a larger section of that in information technology, primarily because there's good growth there and there's good progress, but also because of investments abroad. And, you know, we are very widely diversified across the generally recognized sectors, including, you know, consumer staples, energy, financials, healthcare, and the like. And that just goes to the broad diversification that we seek to have in that portfolio. The next page shows the different distributions that have been made out of the fund since 2008. And 2008 is when we started investing this fund in endowment. So over that time period, we've taken out almost $5.3 million in, in distributions that have gone to fund capital projects throughout the city. And over that time period, the fund balance has grown from a little over $6.7 million to over $13 million. So this has been a phenomenally successful run over the past 13 years. One of the best, you know, market performances that we've had, and we've benefited from that. The next page shows the performance. And since inception, when they started measuring that, which was March of 2009, we've had a 10.4% compounded rate of return over that time period. And that's what's allowed us to not only grow the fund, but continue to generate returns for capital projects. Don't expect that to continue in the future because those types of market conditions aren't going to last forever. But we've been very happy with that performance. Over the last year, the trailing one year, and this was as of March, the portfolio is up 32%. And that's again because of the stock market run-up after the 2000, or after the decline that we had with the COVID. Moving on from that, we'll talk about the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It's a five-member board consisting of Megan Kepf, Marlene McBride, Shelley Memberto, Kit Pomerantzi, and Roger Yoder, who's the chair. I am the Brownfield administrator. And Roman Wilson from Fishback is our consultant. You know, what is a brownfield? You know, everybody has different ideas of that. But basically, it, they're properties in which a development or reuse might be compromised because of environmental contamination. They've also expanded the definition of what constitutes as a brownfield or a facility in the act. But that's the generally recognized definition. Obviously, it's typically former manufacturing or industrial sites. It doesn't have to be. Just about every property in the city could qualify as a brownfield just because of the industrial nature and history of the city. These properties are typically expensive to redevelop and may have fallen into disrepair or considered to be blighted. So the brownfield provides a nice tool to be able to redevelop those properties. And the next slide just shows, you know, the brownfield versus the greenfield. Obviously, it's a lot more expensive to develop a brownfield, but there's some real benefits to that. And those are listed on the next slide. But, you know, at a high level, it can help to re-energize local economies. It can certainly improve neighborhoods by eliminating some of those blighted properties and redeveloping. And you obviously protect the environment from further contamination, especially here around water drinking supplies. Most of the work that the Brownfield Authority does includes partners, whether that's the MEDC or Eagle or at times the EPA and, you know, the DDA. And everybody kind of has to work together on these projects because they're very encompassing and require a lot of different moving parts. So we, we try to foster relations with all those, and it's been very successful. The next project, I talked a little bit about our brownfield, or next page about our brownfield activities that we've been doing. There's two current projects that we're working on. One is the Gateway Project. And I wanted to let council know that we've been working with the owner of those properties to apply to the Eagle for some grant loan products. And we just got notice that they had vetted kind of some of the project proposals and that we were a candidate that would get approved if we applied. So council will be seeing an application come to them probably at the first meeting in July for an $800,000 loan and a $700,000 grant and a living associated development agreement with the developer. But that's a really good start on the Gateway Project, and it will allow those properties to be demolished and also some of the soil contamination and that sort of thing taken care of. So that site truly is redevelopment ready. And at the same time, the owner is working with developers to continue that project along. But this is a tremendous first step. I'm pretty excited about that. So you'll be seeing that in upcoming agenda. And then in the future, there'll also be a brownfield fifth plan as things move forward. For the Lake Shore Motel, I'm expecting that they'll have a small brownfield plan as well, and they're still looking through the details. Our existing brownfield plans include 334, 338 River Street, the American Materials Site where they built the asphalt plant, and the South Washington area. And at the end of this packet, there's just some pictures of before and after of those three projects to kind of show you the transformational effect that brownfield redevelopment can have. So I know that was a lot. We've kind of distinctly different areas. I wonder if anybody has any questions or wants clarification on anything I'm having or trying to answer.
Any questions, council?
If not, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bradler.
Consideration of reclaiming July 2nd, 2021, Leslie J. Lasky Day. In recognition of the contributions Leslie J. Lasky has made during his extraordinary life, it has been requested that the city proclaim his 100th birthday, July 2nd, 2021, Lasky G., Leslie J. Lasky Day. Mr. Eric Protem, do you want to read that?
Whereas Leslie J. Lasky was born and raised in Manistee and has remained a longtime summer resident. And whereas Leslie Lasky enlisted in the Army the day after the attack on Pearl Harbor, landed on Omaha Beach on D-Day, fought in the Battle of the Bulge, as wars end liberated prisoners from German concentration camps. And whereas after returning home from war, Leslie studied at Indiana University and the Institute of Design in Chicago with the founder of the Bauhaus, pioneer Laszlo Moholy-Nagy. And whereas Leslie Lasky is a professor of erudits of architecture at the Sam Fox School of Design in Virtual Arts at Washington University in St. Louis, Missouri, in recognition of his singular approach to design education during his 35-year tenure at Washington University. And whereas Leslie remains a working artist demonstrating that working in the studio is crucial to a creative mind and longevity. And whereas Leslie's talents and resources have benefited many people in public interest in Manistee, to include supporting the renovation of the historic Oak Theater and most recently with a sculpture gifted to West Shore Community College Manistee campus to be placed adjacent to the river line. And whereas Leslie J. Lasky will be celebrating his 100th birthday on July 2nd, 2021, now and therefore be as resolved by the City Council of Manistee that July 2nd, 2021 will be known as Leslie J. Lasky.
At this time, council can take action to proclaim July 2nd, 2021, Leslie J. Lasky Day and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services activities on areas of city involvement. Citizens that attend shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limiting to five minutes. Letter submitted to council lobby paper to read. Is there anybody who would like to make a citizen's comment tonight? Please step up the podium, write your name and address and, and favorite, and state your name as soon as you want.
This is the lady that did, that Brownman gave the opinion before she left.
My name's Mark Anderson. Live at 441 Second Street. What I just came here a little bit for was to kind of comment on our recycling center. I've been coming, we, we try to go home twice a week. Sometimes they're recoupling. Every time we go, do you fill it up or just totally put that? I've got a picture if anybody wants to look at the cardboard from last Saturday, Sunday. It was totally full with not the cardboard ground. You probably have another truck. There's one truck there with the door closed. They do not list the full grade. Now, I don't know what would take, maybe, where's the PC day come out? Maybe every other day you pick up, you know, you give the truck or bring the truck to full. But there needs to be something to, to keep the place open and to have, I guess, more people, like, you know, be able to use the recycling. Because, I mean, it's silly for us to go out there and spend our gas money, pollute the air with our gas, I don't know. And just, you know, have a place to put the stuff that we're trying to recycle and keep, you know, keep the earth a little bit, not that you're better. So I hope, well, maybe my suggestion that, you know, somebody can take PC day or stuff out of the hood and charge it with recycling stuff. They need to get somebody out there to get empty till we can use and have a place to put our recyclable when we do. And then, like I said, the plastic, recycled, all stuff. And I believe the locals need to have somebody there to recycle the plastic to actually tell people, look, you're not supposed to put foam in there. You're not supposed to put plastic bag. And if it was proper wood, it fell up twice quick. So I don't know about that too. And another option would be maybe to, uh, go ahead and start a curbside recycling center. Like I came from Fort Worth, the recycle was a little bucket. And also makes sense telling you that. It's all total tech. And where you put your stuff in there and it's something you're not supposed to recycle. They, you know, they even back in the bucket, they take what they're supposed to or can take and leave the rest for you. You're somewhere else. And that's an option. And I guess, I don't know, that's all bad particular things I would like to start. And one other thing I'm kind of, it's not really I get to do with the Manistee unless, I don't know, I don't know how to put this, but the, of course, I'm like everybody, I'm quite a deep people. I'm very upset about that nothing had been, our colleagues have really been prosecuted on the January 6th. And I believe that any, any of the Manistee election workers who have been, I don't know, develop their, they, are, I'm blessed with a person, I don't know, something that, you know, they should get together and somehow, uh, kind of, you know, do a class action to do against the person that has been telling the day, you know, fraud on the job. I mean, come on. And, and, you know, that, that somebody has done something about this guy. And I know they're working on it. And I hope they get any, or get the person that, you know, that's passing all these laws and make people actually believe them. You know, anybody that, you know, knows the, the election laws, that it's almost impossible to find them to believe. So anyway, what I'd like to do is if anybody knows, uh, who's a, I don't know, an election worker here in Manistee that feels that he's been wrong and his character has been wrong and maybe he's even had some of his friends or somebody say that he better, he not have done whatever, which hopefully none of them, nobody has who did. But if they have, he needs to, I would like him to come, or whoever knows that person, give him my phone number, which I would like to give you.
You have 30 seconds.
Uh-oh. So anyway, if you, I would like to take my phone number now because you know a person like this. Would you please give it to them and have them call me? It's, let's see, what, 231-723, oh no, 231-510-1838. I mean, if not, just, no, come talk to me after this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go to official staff, we have one more resolution that we need to take care of. Mr. Snysen?
Resolution of thanks and appreciation to Thad and Taylor. Whereas Thad Taylor began his career with the City of Manistee on December 8th, 2015, as the city manager. And whereas during his tenure, Thad demonstrated outstanding leadership, initiative, and professionalism in his execution of his many duties and responsibilities as city manager. And whereas Thad worked diligently to create cohesive, healthy, and mutually beneficial relationships with Manistee County and surrounding townships, and that organizations and boards on which he participated motivated by a true heart for community and service. And whereas, as city manager, Thad demonstrated his confidence in the city's department directors and staff, inspiring them to do their best work for Manistee community through his unwavering support and steady leadership.
support and steady leadership. And whereas Thad will remain a great friend to the employees and the City of Manistee. And whereas Thad Taylor has served the City of Manistee with pride, dedication, and integrity since December twenty fifteen, completing five years of service to the community, now and therefore be as resolved that on behalf of the City of Manistee and the city council and its citizens, we give thanks and appreciation to Thad Taylor for his loyal service to this community, and congratulate him on his retirement as of two July, twenty twenty-one.
It's been my honor and privilege to work for the city and work with this fine staff and our council's throughout the five plus years. So it's been my pleasure, and I'm really humbled by taking the time to put together that resolution paper. Thank you very much. No other officials or staff? Do you have anything further, Mr. Taylor?
No, I said nothing. I just want to, I just want to let council know that we were fortunate last night, police and fire. We were able to obtain a L R S B grant, so we were, for the fire service, that was obtaining a Lucas III matching grant, and then for the P D was body case, body case. But thank, uh, thank the L R S B for all that they do. They've really given us a lot to this community, so thanks.
Thank you. Police, do you have anything? Anything further? Okay. Mr. Breder?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
D B W?
Nothing, Your Honor.
S E D engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
S E D engineer?
Just to indicate that I'm not committed to vote, but on that last resolution, if I was, I would have given a soundly yes to that. I think over the course of my working with Thad, just, uh, just a comment that I have great respect and admiration for him. He's done a fabulous job for the city, and he'll be missed.
Anybody? S E D Carter?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Did I miss anybody? Very thankful to council members, Parkman, Panian.
I'd just like to echo that you've done a really good job, Thad, and he will be missed.
Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, I got a couple things. Thad, I want to thank you, I know you guys have come together, so meeting, helping, developing things, I appreciate it. Another thing I might bring up is about, we all got a letter from the Riverwalk. I know I'm tired of it, cleaning the boards and everything, and we were working on the flowers the other day and putting rocks in because the things are falling in. The benches, there are pictures shown between the benches, what they looked like and what they are now, but I think we've been, I didn't tell you most of the work, and made it look really nice. I see in the letter, it says that we've been told to stop working, that the union is going to file agreements. I looked in the union contract, it says volunteers can do the work, so I don't like to hear those kind of things when I agree with volunteers working. So if anybody's got a problem with that, I'd be glad to talk to them, because it's a threat to people. Also, the city was renting out a power washing pool, or not renting, letting users. So if you don't want us to do that, let us know, but some of that work, I've talked with different people, and that some of that work has been done for years, and I think volunteers are committing coming out and do that. It's really great. Really makes the Riverwalk look nicer to visitors and that. Also, a couple years ago, we voted on an ordinance, not to allow dogs on the Riverwalk. I voted against having that, and I told you that's going to come to haunt you. I get nothing but complaints about the people take your dogs down there, and they have waste on the Riverwalk. So I don't know how much is down there, I haven't seen it, I haven't gone down there, but I just get complaints, like always get on everything. So I just want to tell you, that's what's happening again, so if you continue, I'm going to ask for an ordinance to ban dogs on the Riverwalk. And I have my dog, so I know what to talk about. Thank you.
Mr. Parkman?
I just, um, Thad already knows how much I respect his leadership and equally important his friendship, so thank you, Thad, for having you on, and I guess within the scheduled special meetings, we can discuss the rest of the city management stuff that you need to be taking care of. Longa?
Councilmember Beaton?
He will be missed. And, you know, you and I came on board in twenty fifteen at the same time, and I was just really pretty impressed with how you were handling things. And you were, at that time, there were a couple council members that were riding you pretty hard for about a year and a half, and you bore it pretty well. So, and I think you may have won one of them over. So I appreciate sticking in there and having patience. I know right at the end here, we're having to replace, replace you, it's got to be an interesting experience for you, but I think overall, I always appreciated that you got back to me right away on anything that I've had an issue with. So thank you for that, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
I got a couple things. Thank you for answering all my questions and hundreds of phone calls and whatnot. I went back and read, or listened to the May work session with Saith built, and Steve Hatt said that he did, you know, he was at three dozen inspections, and that they were behind trying to catch up from Spicer and everything else going on. And then at the last meeting, you know, not even three weeks later, he's at sixty-five inspections, and they're slow, so they don't need more, more help. And you don't care, so I'm going to talk to you, because now I'm your problem. So, um, he should be well over a hundred and fifty, and I think that he's basically just saying what we want to hear, and I think that we need to have a discussion on finding somebody that can fulfill that contract and move this along, because at the rate he's going, it's never going to get done, and it's constantly, you know, I'm not behind, I am behind, I'm not behind, I did thirty. You've done sixty-five inspections, and it's almost July, that's, I wouldn't tell anybody that, that's horrible. So I think that we need to have a discussion on this and find somebody that can get it done. That's it.
Mayor Forten?
I follow up with one thing, again, the same thing with Saith built, is, you know, I know that there's, and I brought this up before, about windows and sightings and repair versus, perhaps what we need to do is look at a tiered pricing for the inspections, if that is certainly, that must be possible, because again, right now, it's a all or nothing. You either, you're forcing people to be, breaking an ordinance, because you make it so expensive to change one or two windows, it costs you more for the inspection than it does the window. So again, it's a broken process right now, so perhaps if we have something tiered where it is more of a formality and a smaller reasonable fee, a small percentage of what the cost would be, rather than a flat fee like it is right now. I get it if you're talking about, you know, replacing all the windows of your house, but when you're doing a couple at a time, it's basically, and he almost said it, you know, well, I'll just ignore it. Well, it's still, it's making that citizen happening to put himself in a predicament of not following, and I think that we have to make some kind of adjustments to those kind of things. Again, also just wanted to welcome Matt Witkowski again to the fire department, and Thad, again, I've only been on the council for a few years, but I've been around the community process and working jobs similar to yours, and it is not an easy job, and if you don't see it goes, yours, I would thank you, but yours is a thankless job. So, but again, I think you've done great for the city and look forward to having you part of the community and still serving in other ways. Sit.
Well, thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your years of service. I know you're not going to go away. I know you're still going to be involved in doing, and continue to be positive influence of the City of Manistee, and I'm sure the citizens, and I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate all your patience with me. I sometimes can be rather a nuisance, if you will. Just thank you for your time, thank you for all that you've done for the city. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, a second? A motion a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody, we're adjourned.